Where we discuss upcoming agenda items and other such items. I'm going to call now on Mrs. Cook. Tell us what's happening in the lawn.
Well, we had a great start to this school year. We had our teacher night last week. It went very well. I have there some things that we're doing in terms of for the elementary division and with our professional learning community and professional development. And so basically in math, we're working with returning teachers and new teachers. That's Mrs. Rockland is doing that. And also the walkthrough document was the advice. We're using that and the teachers have obtained the device pacing guides. At a one, we have science explorers that'll be starting, I believe, next week. We also are going to continue with our APT's Echo Kids program after school. So who knows what you'll get this year in the spring? And we also want to do the connects competition at BCIU again this year. We have master gardeners coming in in the near future to put some like butterfly bushes and stuff like that around the front of the building.
Can you get them to stop at my house? Since my wife's involved in doing that at a lot.
So they'll be fishing in a couple of weeks. And somewhere there I have indicated that they have an Eagle Scout, prospective Eagle Scout from the high school that is working with Home Depot. And they're, they're going to be putting steps down to the pond area. And then also cleaning up the outdoor classroom near the pond. And that's supposed to be happening this month, the next month, at some point. I didn't hear from him for about a month now. So hopefully we'll be hearing from him soon. And language arts, I wanted to mention the data sharing days, which we are currently doing. And I think, are you doing it too, Christie, right this week?
Yes.
And maybe Brighton's doing it, did it last week. We're working with Karen, the reading coach, on word study expectations and grammar mechanics update. And actually, we have our meeting tomorrow morning with her. And I wanted to say thank you to you and also the technology department. We've already set up a lab with the equipment that we got from the senior high. And it works in our building. So that's an accomplishment. Today was the first day we did Jump Start, which uses some computer programs to work with the intervention students in the building. And you can see there near the bottom that our amounts for grants or money that we obtained from local businesses, Target and Giant, I think that's probably the most we've gotten from them. Our sale this year or fundraising, this year's going to be kid stuff folks, which I don't know that we've ever done that, but that's what we're doing this year. That's about it.
Any questions, Mrs. Cook?
Yeah.
I do have a question for you actually. The, are any of your teachers integrating the Khan Academy work into their lessons? There's a big article in paper about, I guess, in the last couple of days I've been. But there's such a wealth of material that is now put online for free. And I just wonder, does any of that is used?
I haven't had that conversation with anyone recently. I did have a couple of people that shared some information with me, maybe not last year, but the year before. So I haven't actually seen anybody using it recently.
You talked about applying to school-wide discipline plan and a student recognition program. Could you expand a little bit on that?
Well, we, it's posted on our website. It's the same school-wide plan that we have used for probably nine or 10 years. And it is something that we'll be looking at this year, see if we can tweak it a little bit. We recognize students. Any adult in the building can give a child a store ticket. And then they put that in a box and we pull tickets at the end of the month. And they receive, they go, they go on TV or have their names announced on TV. And they get a certificate as well. Yes.
I wanted to ask about five C that gifted in special education being inclusive in reading and math. So for the gifted program, are the, is the gifted teacher working with the regular education teacher?
Um, yeah, they, they, in fourth grade, for example, Mrs. Walker goes into Mr. Hathaway's room a couple of days a week and they do.
Drexel.
Drexel math. I was going to say temple. I knew that was right. Okay. Come on, this is education.
Not a, not a good name this week, temple.
And I believe Mrs. Walker reported on that last year, how that was working. So, yeah, they've been doing that for quite a while. And then she also, you know, pulls some kids out to receive math, additional math. But for the most part, she pushes in for reading and math.
So is there any pull out?
Not every day. What?
Is there any pull out for the gifted students?
Yes. Those kids that are exceptional, that they would need the additional in either reading or math.
And sci, how about science?
Not, not, not much.
So how many children have you identified as gifted?
This year? Um, we, we actually have fewer students than we ever have. Uh, we had thirty, um, I think maybe, we, we tend to have about thirty. Thirty. And so this year, we're probably around ten or twelve.
So why do you cause the level of from thirty to twelve? I mean, that's a big drop off.
I think part of it is that we use a multi-factoristic process to identify students. And also teachers are differentiating more in classrooms than they ever have. And there's not a real need to pull them out or give them additional support. There, there needs to be met in the classroom.
Any other questions, Mrs. Cook?
I think you made a typo there. You have a twenty, fourteen, fifteen school year at the top. Isn't it fourteen, fifteen, sixteen school year?
Okay. I must interrupt it.
Okay, I just wanted you to have our secretary correct that.
I was in another title too, but I won't.
Thank you.
Bob, I just wanted to congratulate you for your staff's effort in fundraising. It's almost eighty-three hundred dollars, which is terrific. And I also appreciate that they continue the girls on the run program. I think that's very important to continue to offer that activity to your, to your students. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. On our public comment, we have Mr. Dahl to stand, give your name and address, Matt. Appreciate it.
Evening. My name is Matt Dahl. I live at thirty-five oh five Wilbon Avenue. Mr. Quinter is my neighbor two doors up. My, my youngest daughter just moved from Jackson Wall to the Reif School. And we are now nine tenths of a mile from school. So my daughter has to walk to school. My older daughter came up through and walked to school for her years at the Reif School. And I would drive her on days of bad weather, when it started cold or icy. And my wife and I were discussing it. And we'd really like to see if we could get a bus stop at thirty-sixth, Thirty-Sixth Street and Grant, because the buses come in off Perkyomen Avenue and turn down. And for the students who live in my neighborhood, that, that section of Reif, it would be much appreciated because in winter time, I think my, I think my daughter has to walk past thirty, thirty homes. And not everybody tells her to walk. And not everybody is diligent about taking care of those areas. And we would really appreciate it because I don't see why we couldn't have a bus stop if the buses are going right past there. If every bus is full, I understand, but I can't imagine that every bus that goes past there is full. And it would just be very, very convenient for, for myself and my neighbors. The Wentlings live up right around the corner from me. And I know that there are two students who live out on Perkyomen Avenue. Because my daughter walks with them every day, going to school and then walking home. So I, I spoke with Mr. Quinter about this. And I told him I'd come to a school board meeting. I, I work a lot of nights, so I can't always get here. He told me to come to like workshop meetings. So here I am. I don't know if you've had a chance to discuss it.
We, I did discuss it with the department. She's looked, checked it out with the.
Yeah, with the school just getting started, this being more of an inclement weather issue, I was going to discuss it with Rick in the near future. He usually stops by in the morning after bus runs are over. And I was going to mention your request to our transportation supervisor. And I'm sure he'll have some input into pros or cons or whatever, the reasons that, you know, that he sees either one way or another. So we haven't done that stuff yet.
Okay.
So maybe that's.
You, uh, which school did you say your child wants?
Reif, two blocks to the Reif. Sorry.
So do you have an idea where you were thinking of a bus stop?
Probably right at Grant Street, Thirty-Sixth and Grant would probably be most convenient, although I would defer to Mr. Wegman, because I know a number of buses come in that route. If maybe if one bus would divert and come one block closer to the high school, that might be easier. But I, again, I don't, I would defer to him.
The Thirty-Sixth and Grant would serve your purpose?
Yes. Yeah, in fact, that's where the buses come in and turn down.
Thank you.
I appreciate what you're asking, because I live at Thirty-Sixth and Reif place. And our kids walked, you know, to Reif. And we just looked at it as exercise, but I was concerned about their safety. And, you know, in the morning, I'm not worried about the kids driving. Actually, I'm more worried about the parents. I think the kids are much better drivers than the parents in the morning. Because the kids just have to get to school, the parents have to get to work. So, you know, I know that we had a discussion with Mr. Wegman about them. It had to do with hardship and sidewalks. And there's, there's more to it than just, geez, a bus, why can't the bus that passes here stop by? But it would be great if we could.
But I think, you know, not just for our neighborhood, but I think further down Grant Street, I think there are students who walk from there who would happily come up to catch a bus, particularly when it's really, really cold.
I saw a young woman get off a bus this morning, a Barta bus, at the Thirty-Sixth and Perkyomen bus shelter, and then walk across the street. I didn't know where she, I didn't think a student actually would use public transportation, but maybe she'll come. I don't know. I just thought it was unusual. I never saw somebody get on a Barta bus to go in there.
Just one thought occurred to me, that if a bus stops at that area, everything else is going to get backed up.
Right. That's why I suggested perhaps if a bus comes a little further, closer to the high school before turning, that, that might bring that bus out of the loop. And stop any kind of backflow that would occur out on Perkyomen Avenue that they came up one block. And again, my daughter walks and she's happy to walk. But I'm just thinking ahead, as, as the weather gets uglier, we've had a couple of really nasty winters. Let's speak for myself. I took a nasty fall on the ice last year. And I know that my, I would rely on my, either my wife or my mother-in-law, my mother, to pick up my older daughter from Reif when it was real ugly, just because I, I don't like her walking that far in, in bad weather.
And you're asking for transportation to and from school, right?
Correct. Yep. And, you know, again, I understand if all the buses are full. And because, because you can't get reimbursed, because we live within a mile of the school, I understand that. But if they're not full, and you're going to use the same amount of gas, why not pick them up? It's a lot easier for everybody.
I think Mr. Dahl's primary ceremony talk to me was in the, because then we have the fifth through, fifth graders walking on a, you know, on the streets, basically.
Don't hire anybody from Buffalo in the future.
We need, we don't need one kid get hurt, walking in the snow and in the old street.
I think, I think one thing would be, that would be hard, is to only create a bus stop for inclement weather. You know, how, how do you determine what to stop and what? It would have to be.
You're setting a precedent for all walkers.
Exactly. That's, yeah, that's, that's the other.
I think you're setting a precedent for all walkers here now.
Yeah.
Light bits of a mile, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Unless you called it the, called it literally the January to March route, or something like that. From New Year's break, once you come back to March fifteenth, it becomes a designated route. Rick and his coordination. Because it sounds like during the regular break, right now, she's got a problem.
No, no problem. And what I, what I would suggest is, is rather than designated an inclement weather route, if it's okay with Mr. Wegman, have, have, have the stop right there to turn up kids. I'm just.
Yeah, that's probably what they do.
But they didn't like it. It's true.
Okay. Thank you all. That'd be nice.
Thank you.
Moving on. Minutes from August eleventh, and the, the meetings on the eleventh and the eighteenth will be approved next week. Does anyone have any corrections to be made those, this time? Then we'll move on to business functions. Mr. Brady.
Yes, this upcoming meeting, we'll be looking at several issues. The first item will be that we will be recommending the board of directors approve a subcontract, sub-grant contract for implementation of the Individual with Disabilities Education Act, Part B, between the Berks County Intermediate Unit fourteen grantee and Exeter Township School District, the sub-grantee or contractor for a total amount of six hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-one dollars and eighteen cents. For the, the project period will be from July first, two thousand and fifteen, through June thirtieth of two thousand and sixteen. Furthermore, the board of school directors will be authorized in the district, looking to authorize the district superintendent, the one who pays more education to the doctor, to execute the agreement. Your funding was six hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Second item, any discussion or questions? Next item we'll be looking at is to recommend to the board of directors authorization of the district administration to accept a proposal from Conrad Segal for consultation, consulting services related to the compliance with section six zero five five and six zero five six, employer reporting mandate under the Affordable Care Act. In early two thousand and sixteen, employers are required to complete the required government form filings with respect to both individual and then large employer mandates. The proposed consulting fee is seven thousand five hundred dollars, which includes all IRS filing requirements, employee notices, and guidance on tracking employee data.
I do have a question. Where did we find this coming?
Oh, they, they work with the trust. They are consulted with the trust in several other school districts. Yeah. The IU done it also.
The IU has decided the prison meeting is Friday at the IU, the business managers committees has that group. Congress will, will be there to answer our questions about the proposal. They're, they're the ones that sent proposals to the trust, because some school districts have expressed concern that they don't feel that they are paired, don't have the knowledge to comply with all of these filings. And there's a lot of information that has to go into it, both reporting to the individuals, employees of this whole district, as well as reporting as an employer. There's just a lot of data that we have to report. I mean, we are gathering it, but with their expertise, because they know the law, they know the care of inside and out. I'm feeling that we could use this for, for this first year, because January thirty-first would be applying for employees. It's like, we do, but then, the end of February, there is employer information that has to apply, on whether we are offering Affordable Care, whether we're offering it to all four kind of employees. There's a lot of codes. It would just, this first year would be very beneficial. But again, we'll hear more this Friday. But I wanted to get it on the agenda, so that we could be approved, if it's favorable, for beneficial to the district.
And will this reporting have any bearing on the established, or the, you know, the determination whether or not a Cadillac tax is appropriate?
Will this reporting?
Yeah. I mean, I was just wondering if, you know, we want to do this right, because if we don't dot our i's and cross our t's, so to speak, then it may cost us more money.
Well, it will. I mean, I mean, the whole point of the reporting is there, then we'll be able to enforce mandates. Right now, for this year, it's enforcing employer mandates and individual mandates. People have to have coverage.
Right.
So they'll be able to, you know, done the hammer or whatever. So they'll use this data. So for the Cadillac tax, of course, yeah, that's all part of it, to, you'll be reporting your premiums across the health care plan. That's, yeah.
So this is seventy-five hundred dollars to do for individual in the school district attention for a specific number of hours? Or are, are you going to all, will all the school districts get together and sort of you'll have like a meeting and for a discussion in every school district? Is that the basic, like, fees?
Well, the, the fees vary, and it depends upon the size of the school. Ours happens to be seventy-five hundred dollars. Wilson, for example, seventy-nine hundred dollars. But they will work with each school district individual.
Or as much as you need them?
They have a scope. And it's to provide all of the gathering the data. I mean, if there's a situation where a school district needs additional work, for example, the quote does not include board presentations, in-depth consulting memos, or IRS inquiry letters, if the IRS had a question about our files. But we'll be responsible for providing as much data that is complete and error-free, I mean, if there are any issues, you know, they would, we would discuss any additional work in advance. I'll find out more on Friday, to make sure we're comfortable with this.
Well, we have the data by January, when we start the collective bargaining process of whether, where we fall in terms of Cadillac tax.
As far as what year it'll, it will be impacted, I mean, this contract negotiations, we're going to have to address that in this next contract.
Yeah. And I'm saying, since we, to what point can we get, we need to have the data.
We already have projected data.
We have projected data.
That it would be in, what, twenty twenty-two or something like that, or twenty, something like that, that.
The trust has all that information.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a new bargain.
Yeah. But you definitely want to get just a projection. You have to address it in the, with this next contract. It depends all of them. So that if we all subject to that, then you would have the opportunity to make adjustments to benefits. So that we're not.
So we'll, we'll get information from the trust?
Yeah. Relative to Cadillac point, well, the, the trust is the one, because it's one for one, one for all with the benefits. There, the, the trust has to make those decisions relative to the level of benefits to ward off the, extend that time between now and, and the Cadillac tax. The X plus amount that's counted in it, so depending on the school district, has the X plus that's added in as a benefit, you know, toward that Cadillac tax. So we would be, what, nine hundred dollars closer to it than a district that doesn't have it.
Yeah.
But, you know, the trust level of benefits, they're tracking that very closely. And that, of course, depends upon the increases each year that, that the plan gets from the blues.
Just remember, it's for the IRS, and they're there to help us.
Well, that's my, actually, that's my main question, is these, we're going to give them the data, they're going to file the reports, then if there are questions about the reports, they're not going to answer the questions.
Unless we pay them.
Yeah, unless we pay them.
Well, this is more of a partnership, in helping the districts in the first year to make sure they're not missing important things.
I had a, I had a talent like that one time. He filed my taxes, but he wouldn't go with me to the audit.
Disavows a new college.
Good time to get out.
Next, we'll be recommending that the board of school directors authorizes the district administration to advertise for bids for our tier of three hundred kilogram, eight-step ADA compliant chairlift to be installed at the junior high school. And our final item that we'll have will be that, at this point, we'll be recommending that board of school directors approve the following Exeter Township School District employees participate in districts procurement card program with a transaction limit of four thousand dollars. Marcy Elwin, the human resources supervisor, Margaret Wright, an assistant principal, and Vicki Willier, supervisor of special education.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Our vendor personnel.
Our first item is ratifying retirement that apparently occurred in August. And do we have a replacement?
A working one, yes, substitute.
Substituting.
Yeah.
Uh, Part B, resignations to support staff and extracurricular staff, and certificated. Uh, yeah. Part B, resignations to support staff and extracurricular staff. Part C, your appointments, certificate staff, substitute teachers, both certificated and guest teachers, support staff and extracurricular staff. Part D is a leaves of absence for certificated staff and support staff. Part E, change of status for support staff. And Part F, for staff conferences, one through thirteen. Any questions?
Thank you. Our vendor personnel. Student affairs, Mr. Cook.
Thank you. Before I go into my report, I would just like to thank the Act ninety-three staff, of which there are several people sitting out here, for their contribution to the Exeter Community Education Foundation Gulf Tournament, which was a great success. And I appreciate the fact that if you've seen what Mrs. Cook had done with your contribution, you would be in awe, I guarantee you. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. We did well, and we'll be back next year. Happy marriage to you.
Privilese thanks during agenda time.
I know, I know. But I couldn't bear anyone else to do it anyhow.
I heard it was a sub-ten.
Not if you saw my school, right?
I don't A reporting field trips within the sixty-mile radius. And B, it's, will be, will be on the field trips that are outside of the sixty-mile radius, wherever. I'm C is, I'll be approving the agreement between the district and the kids. Item C is, I would be approving the agreement between the district and the kids' piece, National Centers to provide private academic programs to disruptive and special education students for the twenty fifteen sixteen school year rate of a hundred and fifty-six dollars eighty-three cents per day per student. If you have any questions, speak now or carry on. Item D will be approving an agreement between the children's home of dwelling and district to provide educational counseling services for district students in an alternative school environment for the twenty fifteen sixteen school year and cost them a hundred and fifty dollars a day for that. And item E will be approving an agreement between the district and Bayada Home Healthcare to provide basic nursing care to students for the twenty fifteen sixteen school year rate of forty-six dollars an hour. I do have a question, is that, that's in school? Is that at?
Is that at Reiften? Dr. Miller?
We have two.
The Bayada?
We have a Bayada nurse at Reiften.
Is that a full-time, they need a full-time assistant?
No, what happened there for the Bayada nurse situation? We had three students moving up from Awatton to Reiften who had seizure symptoms and we had the new nurse that was starting at Reiften to begin a boot and our school district for a while in between and she wasn't getting released totally yet. So we had a bit of a gap between actually, so covered the nursing services in that building for, we weren't sure of how many weeks. So I set up the nursing services for a month to cover the students' needs until they got settled, the teacher got settled, and seizure care procedures, and our new nurse got settled in the building.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And the last item on the agenda is the election of the Pennsylvania School Board Association officers. From the stellar choices you have listed there on the agenda. I think we received some, I have to find information on all of that last part.
So, so should we reform these? Should we, just as is, towards the side?
Stay in these departments.
Any other items, project board board of this town, I just need some information.
Oh, I, I would just like, I'd like to make a suggestion for our board meeting. Can I do that now? Yeah, I just, I, you know, I was thinking about it and sort of remembering the, our last building project and I thought that we made, we made considerable effort to keep the community informed about the progress on the building and I would just like to have, and I am adding to the agenda by where we would at least report if any progress on superintendent surgeon. I think that information should come from us, I, you know what, and I think we should be proactive and I think the community, this is a big step in the life of this school district. And, and I, yeah, I.
Well, I feel totally comfortable sharing that. I've shared it on Facebook and I'll continue to engage in the community on any issue that we have related to public activities. So I don't know if the board, you can, we can make a decision as a board to do that, but I feel an obligation as an independent board member to communicate in a manner that I think is appropriate.
And, and that's fine. What I'm saying is I really think it should come from both of you.
I, I see no problem including that because no one of us reaches anybody, so making a matter of the public record, even if it's, we were thinking about it this week.
But I just want to be clear, we're not, we're not, you're not censoring board members from communicating with the public here.
I've never censored.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I just want to be real.
That was not my suggestion.
No, no, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying.
I think it, I think it reflects poorly on this board if individuals are doing a better job communicating with the public than the entire board as a whole.
Well, I, I agree with you and I think that we ought to be more proactive and just communicating. I mean, in the absence of information, negativity is, it's out there, there's, there's always the, somebody's hiding something or somebody's not sharing information.
Or it's all fixed ahead, it's already.
I, I can tell you, I have a Twitter account, I posted to Facebook and I will continue to do that. I've done public relations for thirty years, I understand how we communicate there. I've been times when I've gone out and I've defended the school district with, with people in the public who have raised issues because it's misinformation. You know, I pointed out a thing two weeks ago regarding some parent who was posting out there regarding lice at Reiften, you know, and, you know, the problem is, is that it's wrong and we do have to be proactive in addressing it. And clearly, the superintendent is a big decision for us. I, I agree with you, Russ. I'd love to see us be much more.
I'll take it a step further and it's just, you know, and I don't know whether or not this is the venue to go there, but I would suggest in the future that this board considers establishing its own Facebook page so that people know where to go to get information from the board as opposed to the places like you're talking.
The problem with that is it has to be maintained and we do have information on the school district site.
I think that with regards to whether, what kind of meeting is that, I mean, the interviews for the individual only occurred in the last week. I think this is the first public time.
I don't, I don't think anybody's complaining.
No, I'm saying, I think that if we're gonna bring it forth, this will be our first public time, but if we're going to post anything as updates, I think that we can easily put something like that on our website and just say, you know, you know, we're a star when our efforts, you know, click here for update on superintendent surgeon, look at where we are at this point. I don't think that should be that difficult to do. I think that, and that's about as public as we can be, but we haven't one.
It's not difficult at all. Just say what you want on there, we'll get it on there.
Any other matters to come before the board is over? Why don't we take a ten-minute break? We need to move to the session again. Thank you.